Hello and welcome to CNets 2023 election coverage. I'm Jeff Rushden of StateCollege.com. And today we're profiling the race for State College Borough Council. With me is Democratic candidate Kevin Cassab. Kevin, thanks for joining us today.
My pleasure, Jeff.
Before we get started, do you have a message you wanted to share?
I do, if you don't mind. I'd like to reach out and wish my dad, Don Cassab, a happy birthday. He turns 91 today, so thank you.
Well, happy birthday, Don. So Kevin, just to start, can you tell us a little bit about yourself and your background?
Sure. I know we don't have much time, so I'll do this quick. Basically, I did a stint in the United States Navy and Marine Corps medical field. I got out and I took a position here at the Borough State College 36 years ago. So I'm a longtime employee of the Borough. I live in the State College Borough, actually live on University Drive, and we love it. And I just recently retired and decided that I still needed, and I still had the energy to continue to give back to the community, so I decided to run for Borough State College Council.
What do you think are the biggest challenges facing State College right now?
I would say the biggest challenge is, there's a couple of them. I think they're all workable and we can make things better. I think some of the, unfortunately, the hate statements that have been actually recently put out there in the State College community is absolutely horrible. And absolutely no patience whatsoever for myself for that. So I think we need to continue to work on that and let the community know, our visitors especially know, that this is a no-hate community and it's zero tolerance. I've been, what I've been doing is, and some people have said to me, Kevin, you're, you know, you worked for the Borough for so long, but obviously, the politics part is a lot different. So since I retired, I've been kind of trying to attend council meetings, looking back at CNets' great archives of past meetings, which has really helped me, to get an idea of the needs and decisions that have been made in the past. Accessory dwelling units is something that's coming up, and I've been researching that. I haven't really come to a conclusion whether I'm for it or against it, but I continue to review that. The other big concern I have is developing another way of tax base within the community to help us serve our residents. I'm clearly dedicated to the downtown and our businesses. My parents actually had a business for 35 years in the downtown, so it's really close to my heart, and also, I'm very close to the other hardworking businesses, small businesses downtown. The other thing is, coming up is we have the parking garage. We need to look at that. You know, that's going to be, I think, a tough play. I've actually, you know, kind of met with the individuals that originally they were looking at the space, just to see where they were, and to get a feel of how it was handled and how we can handle it better. So I did that, so we have that on our plates. I think, as we all see, this is a great community and a busy community, so there's always something that comes to the plate. We really love the positive stuff that comes to the plate, and it is a really positive, great, loving community. I'm really, really involved with the special activities that we do downtown. I think they're critical for bringing our long-term residents together and their families, visitors, and our student residents. So that's a little bit where I am. I realize once I'm on, you know, things will be all over the place, but I'm a good listener. I'm a patient person, but when I stand hard for things that I believe, and I will stand up to that and represent the community.
Affordable housing has been an ongoing issue in the Borough. Are there particular things you think council and staff can be doing to, you know, increase the amount of affordable housing that we have here in State College?
That's a little bit of another place that I'm really close to my heart, and I'll be upfront, I'm a first-time homebuyer years ago, and we live on University Drive. The program was absolutely amazing. The staff worked really great with us. We, again, we just love it, so I'm very, very supportive of the first-time homebuyer program and land trust. I follow that, and I try to help out with their fundraisers, visit, they have two new units on University Drive that are absolutely amazing. I volunteered for a day of caring to help lay pavers, and I'm not a real handy person, so I don't know if I was in the way, but I enjoyed myself. So I'll do anything and everything I can do, and that's my big thing with the ADUs is, I'm not against them, but I just, we sometimes, the Borough, and I'll be the first to admit, and people that know me will be the first to acknowledge it, sometimes we take on more than we really can take on. So we really need to, moving forward, be critical about what we need to do. Sometimes, unfortunately, some things have to sit on the back burner. So that's where I am with the ADUs. I just don't know how many people would be into that. I'd rather see the energy and staff time put into first-time homebuyer programs, so that's, that's where I am on that. Probably a long-winded conversation, but that's where I am.
You know, you mentioned small businesses, and there's a good deal of empty retail space, particularly in the new high-rises. Are there things you think, you know, the Borough could be doing or exploring to help to fill those spaces and to, you know, help small businesses get into them?
What I think is, I drive around, I shop downtown, I love downtown, and it is sad to me to see the number of empty spaces that we have downtown, and unfortunately, a lot of the empty spaces are new construction. So I'm not so sure that the incentive that was put in place is actually worked. They, you know, they sit with them, I don't know, I can't, I'm not an accountant, but my guess is, they sit empty, they just write it off. There's no real push to fill those spaces. I think they had a little bit of a timeframe that they're supposed to fill them, but again, cost for the rents on those buildings are astronomical, and a small business just can't. So I think council, along with the amazing help of the Borough staff, it would be great if we could look at grants and other avenues to assist with getting small businesses into our downtown spaces.
You also mentioned the parking garage issue. That is going to be, the next council is going to have to deal with that. You know, what kind of approach do you want to take, you know, even if you don't have specific ideas of what can be done to replace the Pew Garage? What kind of approach do you want to take when considering options for that?
Well, the big thing that I like to see, and again, I wasn't in the loop, but just from reading media stuff and listening, it seems like the owners of the property kind of were left out a little bit and caught off guard. That's unacceptable. I know the Boroughs apologized for that. So moving forward, we definitely need a new garage. People look at the Pew Street Garage, and it looks like a garage, and they don't see the inner structure aspect of it, and it's at a point that it's not going to be safe anymore. So it needs to come down, and we need parking. I, you know, where the parking should be, again, that'll be a long discussion, but I hope we bring in the community, residents of the Borough State College, even reaching out to Ferguson Patent College, Harris Township, Half Moon, just to get some ideas of what people think will work. And I think we need to include those groups, even though they don't live in the Borough, but hopefully, they shop in the Borough, and we want them to shop in the Borough. So that's where I am on it, so.
What, if any, improvements do you think the Borough needs for its bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure?
I definitely think we need to increase our investment in bicycle safety, bicycle routes, and, you know, I'll say it across the board, obviously, we've had horrible tragedies regarding bicyclers, and I think the majority of them were not the bicycler's fault, but there has been some that, you know, people can be on bikes and not be, you know, and be careless, not follow the bicycle rules of the road. So I think we, across the board, need to do a lot better with education on both ends about bicycle safety, but I'm all for increasing bicycle safety. I, you know, I think we need to be careful a little bit with it because not everybody's a bicycler, and I'll be upfront, I have no hard feelings against bicycling or anything like that. I have tons of friends, family, my grandchildren are bikers, but biking's just not my thing. You know, I'll walk, you know, I'll take, you know, CADA and that, but I think we really need to look at it. But again, I think we need to invest in our bike safety and our bike routes within the Borough State College, and we need to reach out to the experts that understand the biking system.
What do you think is the most pressing need in the Borough's ongoing zoning rewrite?
Clearly, an ability to increase our tax base. I've been following it, you know, years and years at the Borough, so I hear it, I listen to it, I live in the Borough, so I knew a little bit about it. It's not, obviously, an easy fix. I know we have, again, great staff that have been working really hard to figure out a way to increase the tax base by going, I think, reducing the height from like 12, but then to nine. I don't want to make too many comments on it that I get wrong, but again, you know, looking at being able to build duplexes, I think, is it a great idea? I'm confused about why the lot size has to be bigger than a single-family for a duplex. It sounds like we're making it more complicated. I don't imagine a duplex is going to be, structure is going to be much bigger than a single-family dwelling. So those are things that we need to look at, and I'm anxious to get, you know, up on that and work hard to figure out, again, ways that we can increase our tax base within the Borough. But it's, time has come to redo the zoning rewrite and get it finished, so hopefully it'll be done. I, well, from the last meeting, it's probably going to this new council, so we'll be very involved in that.
We have about 20 seconds left, so I'll give you this opportunity to share anything else you would like to with the voters.
Just, I guess, one thing, it was really tough retiring, but it was time to turn it over to somebody younger and with more outside-the-box ideas, so that was my decision. I love the Borough, I love living in the Borough, I love living next to student residents, I enjoy being around my long-term residents. Things can always be worked out. I think the biggest thing is to talk it out and be respectful to each other and not go off on each other. Voice our issues and concerns, and then, again, make them work out. So I hope, I'm looking forward to the election, and I'm looking forward to listening and serving the State College Borough community, including our student residents.
Great, well, thanks for joining us today.
Sure, Jeff.
We've been talking with Kevin Cassab, Democratic candidate for State College Borough Council. All candidates in this race have been invited to take part in a CNET interview. Election Day is Tuesday, November 7th, and you can also vote by mail. For more information, contact the Center County Office of Elections or visit CenterCountyVotes.gov. I'm Jeff Rushden of StateCollege.com. Thanks for joining us, and please be sure to vote. Hello and welcome to CNets 2023 election coverage. I'm Jeff Rushden of StateCollege.com, and today we're profiling the race for State College Borough Council. And with me today is Democratic candidate Evan Myers. Evan, thank you for joining us.
Jeff, great to be here, as always.
So Evan, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're running again for Borough Council.
So I was on council for two terms. I served as a president of council for two years, and I've lived in State College since I moved here as a teenager, more than 50 years ago, and I've been involved to go to Penn State, and I've been involved in all kinds of civic life since then. I was on the Planning Commission, including serving as Chair of Planning Commission. I was on the COG Finance Committee, I served as Chair of that for a while. I was on several special committees prior to that, Downtown Vision and Strategic Plan, Consolidation Study Commission. I love State College, I love being here, and it's been such a great community for me and my family that I think it's important to give back when you live in a community, and I have such a special feeling for it, so that's why I'm here.
Great. What would you say are the biggest challenges facing State College right now?
Well, there, I think there's a number of them. I know that we're looking at a zoning rewrite, that's something that we've been looking at for many, many years, and I think we need to do it right. We need to do it. We need to do a zoning rewrite, but we have to make sure that when we do it, it accomplishes what we want to. Obviously, things change as you move into the future, and that's something that, you know, we'll look at as time goes on, but for now, we have to make sure that we've considered as many things as we possibly can. My understanding is that's not something we're going to get to finish under the current council, that the council that I hope to serve on, that we'll do that, and I'm sure there are a few parts of that that we're going to, we're going to look at. Downtown being a vibrant downtown is really important, and I think that in some ways it is and some ways it isn't. Small businesses, for example, have really struggled in downtown State College, and I think, I've thought about some specific things that we might be able to do to help attract small businesses. You know, we have inclusionary housing now for folks that live in apartments and so on. I think we need to develop something like that, and it's happened in other places around the country, not too many, but we can be creative. Inclusionary business, when someone builds a new building, that, just like we have standards for someone to be able to, be able to afford to live in a place, we should have a standard like that to be able to rent at a lower cost in a building, and we give the developer that kind of incentive. Certainly, a Starbucks wouldn't move there, they wouldn't qualify, but if you wanted to open a coffee shop, you probably would qualify for that. So that's important. Neighborhoods, strengthening our neighborhoods are very important, and making sure we have the right kind of connections with downtown and other parts of the area through pedestrian and bicycle and bus connections, things like that. A good relationship with Penn State's important, and also, affordable housing. There is an affordable housing crisis, not just across the country, but also in State College. So there's a lot of things we have to address, and one of the foremost ones is our tax base, because we're really constrained by the legislature as to what we can charge taxes for, and I think that that's something we need to get creative with as well.
Well, you mentioned the zoning rewrite, and I'll get to that first. You know, what do you think are the most important or pressing issues that need to be addressed when that, you know, in?
Well, I think, I think there's a couple of different areas, actually. Downtown is one of them. We need to look at everything from density to building height to some of the incentives that I talked about a minute ago for businesses. We need to make downtown vibrant. We need to make it a destination, so we need to have a zoning philosophy that is going to be able to do that, to have the right kind of mix, the right kind of being inclusive to attract all kinds of different folks, not just students from Penn State, which I think are important to attract, but people from, from all around the community. I think, I think that's important. Our neighborhoods, making sure that when we have single-family dwellings, when we have apartment houses, that they're all to scale with one another, so that one doesn't overrun the other part of a neighborhood, and I think, I think that's important, just what that, what that mix is. And again, as I mentioned before, I think the connections are important, so we can, as far as zoning, we can look at some of those things. And the last thing is how we impact, how we're impacted by and kind of work with the surrounding townships. There are some places, like the West End of State College, which goes right up against Ferguson Township, we need to have a similar philosophy, we don't, from a zoning philosophy, so that we don't go from one type of dwelling, one type of building in one place and just a block away have something totally different. So I think we need to blend that together. So there's a number of things we need to address.
Yeah. You also mentioned earlier affordable housing. What do you think council and staff here in the Borough can, can do to increase and improve the amount of affordable housing that we have here?
Well, you know, we have our first-time homeowner, homeowners or homebuyers program. We have the land trust, we have a number of different programs. I'd like to see them expanded, funded more. Perhaps there's a way that we can get some federal, for state funds to do some of that, to buy some more houses to be able, be able to do some of that. Certainly, we need to look, and this goes back to zoning, we really need to look and see how we can use this inclusionary and affordable housing in some apartment houses. Certainly, I was a student at Penn State, and being a student is a different lifestyle, not, I lived that lifestyle when I was, is a different lifestyle than a family, than a couple, than a single person who's working. And so we need to make sure that we have the right kind of mix in our, in our affordable places. There are some students who need some, not some of that affordable housing, they're not getting it from Penn State, and there's certainly folks that work downtown, that work at Penn State, that work in the area that also need it. However, I think there's, there are some of those folks that are professionals that don't want to live in a student apartment house. So to create the, both in the same apartment block, I don't think that works, so we need to get creative with that, too. Again, not disparaging students, different lifestyle, just like folks that may have a family of a different lifestyle, so we need to make sure they blend together.
What's your view on the Borough's relationship with the Center Region Council of Governments? And, you know, how much value do you think there is in that regional cooperation and consolidation of services?
I think there's a lot of value, actually, in that. The Center Region has, for example, the third-largest park system in the state of Pennsylvania after Philadelphia and Pittsburgh, and we could only have that, and only have all these parks if we had a COG. I've talked to folks that are parts of COGs from other parts, other areas in the state, and they constantly praise what we have here. We work well together. You know, I've sat at COG meetings, and I have no idea, for example, what political party a person on the finance committee with me is or anything. We're all working, we've, our sleeves rolled up, and we're working for the common good, and I think we understand how all the different municipalities fit together. I think it's helped us, I think it's helped make this a more vibrant area, having COG. I'd like to see more in the way of consolidation, have one government, but until that day comes, if it ever does, I think COG is an important structure that we use, and I think we use it pretty well.
State College recently had, I know, as you well know, two incidents of anti-Semitic propaganda being distributed in neighborhoods and downtown, and this isn't the first time in recent years that hateful literature or imagery has shown up by anonymous actors in the Borough. What if you, what if anything do you think council can do to address this and demonstrate that State College is a welcoming and inclusive community?
Well, first of all, I, our community has so impressed me by the stance it's taken, and I'm talking about council, but not just council, that when those incidents occurred, people from all walks of life, all organizations have stepped forward to condemn that, and that's awesome. That's a great kind of community to live in. Certainly, council has taken a stand opposing that or any kind of hate speech or any kind of hate-type activities for years, through ordinance, through resolution. It's important to speak up and speak out. Silence equals acceptance, and if you don't speak out about it, if you don't speak up about it, and you don't look at things that you can do to combat that, it's not a good situation to be. It makes people think, it's, some people might think, well, that's okay, no one said anything about it. It's not okay, it's never okay.
What, if any, kind of bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure improvements do you think State College needs?
I think we need, we need better bicycle and pedestrian connections. This is certainly, it's a walkable community. I mean, State College, from a geographical standpoint, isn't all that large. You can live in lots of neighborhoods, you can live in a student apartments, a little bit farther away, and still walk downtown, or certainly bicycle here and bicycle to campus as far as distance is concerned, but we don't have the right kind of connections. We'll have a bicycle lane from down at Easterly Parkway and Wapalani Drive all the way to downtown on Spark Street, probably the most traveled street. It's not that safe. We need to look at safe connections. We've had a number of accidents in the last year or so in which bicyclists have been hit by cars, pedestrians as well. We need better signage, we need probably a few places more stop signs, we need to work with Penn State to establish good entrances to campus and ways for people to get there, too, because a lot of the bicyclists and a lot of the pedestrians are either students or people working on campus. So I think it's really important that we work with Penn State to really enhance those.
We have about a minute left, so I'll give you this opportunity to share anything else you would like to with the voters.
Well, I wanted to thank you and CNET for doing this. Full disclosure, I'm on the Board of CNET, so I think that's important to say. There's, you know, there's a lot of challenges, I think, that face State College, and you asked me why I wanted to be back on council, and I gave some of the experiences I've had, but I think it's really important that there are so many different challenges that we face that I think we can overcome if we roll up our sleeves and work together, and that's what I want to do. I want to work with the community, other members of council, to address all these different things that you and I talked about over the last dozen minutes or so, and get those things done. I think State College really has a great future if we can do that, roll up our sleeves and get things going, and I'm looking forward to getting to work.
Well, thanks so much for joining us today. We've been talking with Evan Myers, Democratic candidate for State College Borough Council. All candidates in this race have been invited to take part in CNET interview. Election Day is Tuesday, November 7th, and you can also vote by mail. For more information, contact the Center County Office of Elections or visit CenterCountyVotes.gov. I'm Jeff Rushden of StateCollege.com. Thanks for joining us, and please be sure to vote. Hello and welcome to CNets 2023 election coverage. I'm Jeff Rushden of StateCollege.com. Today, we're profiling the race for State College Borough Council, and with me is Democratic candidate Josh Portney. Josh, thanks for joining us.
Thank you so much. Honored to be here, Jeff, thanks.
So Josh, just to start, tell us a little about, a little about yourself and your background.
Sure, so I am a young professional here in town, I'm also a Penn State law student, but chiefly, I work for State Representative Scott Conklin. I've been here for a number of years, and I really truly care about this community. Back when I was originally raised, I was originally raised in the greater Philadelphia area. Back there, I was involved heavily in local government, politics, and community organizing, and I continued that when I got here, and I intend to do that until, until I leave, which is probably going to be never.
So what was it about Borough Council, you know, why, why did you want to run for Borough Council?
Sure, so I've been serving on the State College Borough Planning Commission for almost two years now, and through it, we have really done a lot of great work with respect to zoning and different changes and looking at plans and evaluating things from the safety of our town and development and how to, you know, keep that controlled in a responsible way that, that also grows affordable housing and other opportunities. But I've realized that there is a limit to what the Planning Commission can do, there's a limit, and ultimately, the Borough Council is the final say. And so I want to continue serving this wonderful community that has given so much to me, and I want to give that back, you know, that service back on State College Borough Council. I think that's the best way that I can serve.
Well, I know you're familiar with this, the ongoing, long-running zoning rewrite. What do you think are the most pressing or important issues that need to be addressed in the rewrite of the Borough zoning code?
Sure, so obviously, affordable housing is the first issue that we need to tackle. We have a housing crisis, and we need to figure out ways to take the stock of what we already have in the Borough and be able to increase the availability and the, and density in, in a way that doesn't completely radically alter the look of our downtown. We also need to look at safety, you know, with respect to other buildings and developments, the pressure that we're putting on our environment and the pressure that we're putting on our roads. It really needs to be considered, and I have been trying to consider that, and throughout this very, very long process, which... this very, very long process, which was long before I even got onto the ship. Now it's really, you know, sailing, and I hope we're going to get it done in the first quarter of next year, but we really need to look at safety, we really need to look at how to improve and increase our tax base through housing and increase housing opportunities, but also do it in a responsible way. And that's really something that's been the task at hand, and I think we've done a really good job. I credit the planning department here at the Borough for doing an amazing job.
You know, you mentioned affordable housing, and that has been an issue in the Borough and, of course, elsewhere for quite some time. You know, what do you think council can do and the Borough staff can do to increase the amount of affordable housing that we have available here in the Borough?
Sure. So like what I was saying with taking the stock of what we already have, the planning department has done an incredible job of mapping it all out, showing us what we have and our heights and the limits for whatnot. We can take what we have, and we can take a single-family home, make it a duplex. We can take a, one of those old, you know, historic homes on West College and convert it to, you know, a three- or four-story to increase some density and have more opportunities there. What we can also do is we can work with these individual landlords and developers and identify areas where they would be able to, you know, give us working people housing, because we need to make affordable housing for working people, people who work for Penn State, people who work for the hospital, people who work, you know, for different things. We need to be providing opportunities for them to live affordably, and so we need to work with developers to figure out where in the Borough can we put good, affordable workforce housing? And there, all of these, you know, the market, the controls, everything, that's all at play, and it's all on the table. And we've done a really good job so far, and we're continuing, looking, you know, at the West End development, looking at, you know, places on White Hall and things like that. There are areas where we can work to get good, affordable workforce housing downtown.
What's your view on the Borough's relationship with the Center Region Council of Governments? And how much value do you think there is in that regional cooperation, sharing of services?
Sure. I think that, you know, State College, obviously, being the population hub of the Center Region, is a crucial ally. You know, we, as one, we have, you know, we have our services that we provide to our residents, but together with the other municipalities that neighbor, I think it's important that we continue to work with them, because together, we can provide even more services. So the parks, the library, things like that, these are really good social services that we provide, and I don't see a world in which the Borough is not a part of that, and I think that we need to continue our role as the champion of that. And I'm proud to be a part of an intergovernmental cooperation like that. It's really something special. I was just at the Lucy Land Use and Community Infrastructure Meeting that met with the Center Region Planning Commission, of which I serve on, and hearing from a wide perspective of different municipalities and their perspective on things, that's good government, and that's what I really, really like about the Center Region Council of Governments and all the things that they're involved in, the Center Region Planning Initiative. I'm really proud that the Borough is a part of it.
What kind of bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure improvements do you think are needed in the Borough, if at all?
Yeah, I mean, of course, we're always looking at master plan of downtown and how it connects up with the university and how it connects up with our multiple parks and leisure spaces. We need to make sure that we are a bikable town. We have the highest, we have one of the highest amount of percentage of people who bike to work and walk to work. We need to ensure that even downtown, there, you know, there are places downtown that say you can't bike here, and so they're going to have to bike on the road with these cars, where we've seen unfortunate tragic incidents. We need to make sure that there is accessibility for biking, especially in the heart of downtown. We need to make sure that there are segmented parts of even the sidewalk. You know, I go to the boardwalk, and you have places for bikes and places for pedestrians, and I think that's something we could, that's innovative thinking, outside the box, that we can bring here. The end of the day, we need to be able to make sure that we can stand by, we are a bikable community, bikes and pedestrians are welcome here, we are not a car-first town, we are a pedestrian-first town. And I'm proud of that, and I want to make sure that everything we do and everything that I will do on council is pushing that forward, that accessibility and access.
State College recently had two incidents of anti-Semitic propaganda being distributed in a neighborhood and downtown, and this isn't the first time in recent years that, you know, sort of hateful literature or imagery have been sort of anonymously distributed or posted in town. What, if anything, do you think council members can do to address, to address this sort of thing and demonstrate that State College is a welcoming and inclusive place?
I mean, I think calling it out is one thing I've been saying as much as I can. We need to be able to call out. You need to be able to look at the anti-Semitism and hate and call it out. You know, as a Borough Council, we called it out. You know, not we, but the current council called it out. The police chief, they're doing an incredible job of investigating where this came from, what is it connected to, where is it coming from? But as a council, we need to be strong, a strong voice that says, this is not our community, this is not welcome here. You know, every other, every other culture, everybody is welcome here. The only thing that's not welcome here is that kind of hate, and any hate that says that group of people, they're not welcome. That kind of thinking is not welcome, and I think that as a council, we, being a strong voice, working with the Penn State especially, you know, with them allowing, you know, different hate groups to really kind of get situated and take a stronghold, it's really a hard thing. We need to work with the university and say, look, this is not okay, this is not welcome, we're not going to be doing this. And it's sad that it happened. I am Jewish, and I was not directed, I was not, you know, the messages didn't come to me, but they came to Evan, one of my fellow running mates, and I am deeply, I'm hurt, I'm just as hurt as he is, and it's not State College, this is not what we are.
Downtown has seen, you know, some empty retail space, particularly in the newer high-rise buildings. What do you think that the Borough can do to, you know, encourage business development in those spaces and particularly small and locally-owned businesses?
Yeah, so, you know, in the past, I've been championing, and I still do, you know, a plan to work with the redevelopment authority of the Borough, work with those landlords, and say, we are going to come in and we're going to, I want this program to go forward, the program I was talking about before, offering rent incentives to small mom-and-pop shops, maybe from, you know, underrepresented minority backgrounds, bringing small business opportunity here to the Borough, because the problem is, is what you were saying, in the new high-rises, they're not even retrofit. They're not even retrofit to be used as retail. So there's this high barrier of entry. We need to be, as a Borough, we have an obligation to not only keep our downtown vibrant and thriving, but we also have a tax base that's untapped. When you have an empty store, that's an empty, you know, that doesn't create tax revenue for us. And so what we can do is we can work with these developers and work with the redevelopment authority and say, we're going to come in and we're going to finance part of this, and we're going to subsidize the rent, and we're going to see this small business grow, and it's going to be a come apart of State College, and I really want to see that coming through. That's one of my biggest priorities when I hopefully get on the State College Borough Council.
The next council is going to have to deal with the replacement for the Pugh Street parking garage, and of course, you know, after this past summer, they considered eminent domain for one building and withdrew that. How will you go about approaching, what to do about replacing that garage in those parking spaces and, while still being able to, you know, keep businesses where they are?
Sure. I mean, the biggest thing with that whole incident, it was a sort of crazy incident that happened over the summer. We need to take time to figure out what their intentions are, you know, the owners of that building, what their intentions are, what the, we need to look at that entire downtown neighborhood, all of that, you know, the three dots, all that whole entire corridor, everything we need to say. Where is your five-year plan? What do you want to see five years? Because this is our vision, and we need to talk about what your vision is, and how do we mesh them together? We need to be having open dialogue, and I think a big thing that I want to champion is telling staff, look, we need to have conversations with the business owners. We can't just impose things on them. We need to be talking with them, and if we talk with them, we can come to a good solution with the Pugh Street Garage. Now, the Pugh Street Garage, I've seen, I've seen ideas of where we can put retail on the ground of that new garage. I think that would be a fantastic idea. I think moving around small businesses, allowing for more, you know, as I was just talking about, new small businesses. There's a lot of economic opportunity there, but we need to talk, we need to have open conversation. Conversation and open dialogue is the biggest thing that we need to have in, when we're talking about long-term planning like that. This is not short-term planning. This is long-term, what does our town look like? And we need to really consider who is there right now.
We're just about out of time, so I'll give you this last opportunity to share anything else you would like to with the voters.
Yeah, sure. I mean, I just want to say that I've been serving this community in the Planning Commission, and I'm really, really excited to continue serving, you know, on State College, you know, serving our government here in State College. I love this area. I want to raise a family here, I want to stay here for as long as I can, because this is the community that's given me so much already, and I owe debt of gratitude to this community, and I want to continue serving it as best as I can, and I hope that the State College voters will place their trust in me on State College Borough Council.
Thanks so much, Josh.
Thank you.
We've been talking with Josh Portney, Democratic candidate for State College Borough Council. All candidates in this race have been invited to take part in a CNET interview. Election Day is Tuesday, November 7, and you can also vote by mail. Contact the Center County Office of Elections or visit centercountyvotes.gov for more information. I'm Jeff Rushden of StateCollege.com. Thanks for joining us, and please be sure to vote.